It's the mayor of the city of Stanton. I call the regular meeting to order for the Stanton City Council on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The first item is to just remind everybody that if you could please still wear your mask while you're in City Hall, we would certainly appreciate it. The next item is the pledge of allegiance. If you would care to do so, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
... To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation moment of silence, and tonight it's Counselor Terry Holmes. Counselor Holmes.
What I'd like to talk about is not really a prayer or anything like that, but we're seven individuals on this council, and we all have one vote. But it seems a lot of times that it doesn't work out that way that it... And I understand elections matter, but we don't have the proper communication among themselves that we should have, and and it's it's kind of hard sometimes when you feel like you're getting blindsided. And I just, I just I've been on council for a long time, and this never happens before. And I just really, I just I think it makes it hard for us to do a good job. I really do believe that. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay. The next item is the mayor's report. The first item is a proclamation in recognition of service of Dr. Francis Collins. But before I read the proclamation, Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As council prepares to recognize one of Stanton's own for his decades of accomplished public health service, I want to take just a moment to introduce to you another public health professional. Also on the Zoom platform is Dr. Elaine Perry. Dr. Perry was recently appointed as interim health director of the Central Shenandoah Health District, filling the position vacated by Dr. Laura Carnegie on the occasion of her retirement. Dr. Perry kindly joins with us this evening to celebrate the accomplishments of her public health colleague. Dr. Perry, welcome to the Central Shenandoah Valley. We look forward to working with you. Madam Mayor, you-
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenberg, for inviting me to be part of this, and I very much look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may now wish to proceed with presentation of the proclamation.
All right. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation in recognition of service of Dr. Francis Collins. Whereas Francis Sellers Collins, M.D., Ph.D., was born in Stanton, Virginia to Fletcher and Margaret James Collins on April fourteenth, nineteen fifty. And whereas, after graduating from Stanton High School, formerly known as Robert E. Lee, he attended the University of Virginia, Yale University, and the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And whereas, having been chosen to lead the International Human Genome Project, reading out the three billion letters of the human DNA instruction book for the first time, Dr. Collins and his team delivered results ahead of schedule and made them freely accessible to all in two thousand and three. And whereas, during his tenure as a director of the National Institutes of Health, Dr. Collins garnered broad bipartisan congressional support for NIH research to tackle some of the most pressing health issues facing Americans, including Alzheimer's disease, cancer, opioid use disorder, rare diseases, and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas, Dr. Collins is the longest-serving presidentially-appointed director of the National Institutes of Health, having served three U.S. presidents over more than twelve years. And whereas, Dr. Collins ended his time as the director of the National Institutes of Health on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to return to his research at his laboratory at the National Human Genome Research Institute. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council, and the city of Stanton, Virginia expresses its deep appreciation to Dr. Collins for his many years of service to the United States as the director of the NIH and recognizes and honors him as he concludes his service as director for the significant contributions he has made towards advancements in science that have enhanced the health of our nation's citizens. Date at this thirteenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-two, Andrea W. Oaks, Mayor.
Wow.
Dr. Collins? Dr. Collins?
Yes.
Mark Robertson, you may not remember me, but I, several many years ago, when I was at Medical Center Pharmacy, the one behind the main post office in Stanton, you walked in, and I knew who you were, and my younger text did not. And to be all honest, I started stuttering. I said, do you know who that is? And just to tell you how much you mean to me, how much you mean to Stanton, how much you mean to this nation for everything you have done for us and the nation as a whole. And I sincerely congratulate you on this wonderful achievement. And I don't know whether you're now retired, but enjoy it if you want to, or maybe you're still working. You're a go-getter.
Dr. Collins, this is such an honor for the Stanton City Council. You are at the level of a god. I mean, we are just in awe. And just like Vice Mayor Robertson said, we are starstruck. I mean, you are a rock star, and we so appreciate everything you have done for this nation, and you have made Stanton proud. You are a true Stantonian, and for that, we salute you.
Well, thank you all for this incredible honor from my hometown, and to be able to be recognized in this way, something I never dreamed would have been possible when I was growing up on East Beverly Street, is just a wonderful gift. My wife Diane Baker here with me, we're in Chevy Chase, Maryland, in my home office. And yeah, I'm not retired yet. I'm working in my laboratory and working on some writing projects. But thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor Robertson, as well. You know that Medical Center Pharmacy, that's interesting. One of the summer jobs I had in high school was typing up the dictations for Dr. William Harmon, whose office was right there in that same-
He was my doc.
Yeah. Bill Harmon, who then later became my father-in-law. So interesting connections all the way around. Yeah, I grew up initially on a farm about seven miles outside of Stanton, out near Verona, Penny Royal Farm. My parents started the Oak Grove Theater in that grove of oak trees up above our farmhouse when I was three years old, that theater that continues once Omicron and the rest of COVID finally leaves town, to be an amazing gathering place for people to get together and just have a wonderful time with the theatrical experience, whether as audiences or as actors and players. But we moved in town when I was ten years old to that big brick house there on East Beverly Street, which had been my grandparents' and then became my parents', and later my brother's house, kind of the family tradition. And moving in town, my parents decided it would be okay for me to go to public school, which I had not done when we lived at the farm. And I had the great good fortune to have the kind of education that I think is just the perfect way for a kid with my curiosity and interests to get exposed to lots of interesting ideas and thoughts. And it was that tenth-grade chemistry class at Lehigh taught by John House that got me excited about science. It's like, wow, this is something I think I could spend my life on, trying to basically solve mysteries, because that's what science was all about. You were a detective, and you had to figure out whodunit or what molecule did it, and science gave you the tools to do that. So that's really the reason that I became a scientist. It was that experience in that public high school in this wonderful town of Stanton, Virginia. My dad, of course, taught at Mary Baldwin, taught drama. My mother was a playwright. The way in which they created all kinds of opportunities for the arts to flourish in Stanton is something that I look at today with great pride, seeing what their impact has been in music and in theater. And of course, I grew up in the middle of all that, too. And so many of their friends became my friends, and then their friends' children became my friends, and now we're all interconnected. If it weren't for this darn Omicron virus, Diane and I were planning to be in Stanton just later this month for a big old jam session in McCracken Hall on the Trinity Church grounds. But no, we kind of figured that was not the time to do that. Yeah, what are you gonna do? Get a bunch of old people in a room and sing to each other in the middle of Omicron? Maybe not exactly what you're recommended to be doing right now. But I look forward to the chance to recreate those scenarios again with all the dear friends that Diane and I have, having spent all those years being part of that and always feeling embraced. Whenever we showed up in Stanton, the warm arms just wrapped around us. We wrapped them back again, because that feels like home, and it always will. We may end up in other places from time to time, but that's the place where I think the roots are still very strong and very deep. So to get this opportunity to see and hear from all of you and to have this amazing proclamation read, which I never expected, is just a wonderful surprise, a wonderful joy. And I just want to say thank you to all of you council members for your leadership in the town. It's not an easy time, I'm sure, for you. I don't know what your agenda is tonight, but I bet it's not going to be full of fun. Probably got some pretty serious issues to wrestle with. But thank you for your willingness to be public servants in this way. I think public service is something that doesn't get the same attention and appreciation that it should. And I hope that in your efforts there, you do feel, from time to time anyway, that you're really doing the right calling of trying to help make that community as good as it can be, because it's a magical place, and your efforts make it magical every day. So thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. And Dr. Collins, not to make you blush, but would any other council members like to make a few comments or share any memories?
Well, this is Carolyn Doll. I had two quick questions for you. Did you have Ms. Whitelaw?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
And you can't forget that if you've had her, yeah. And my other question is, should I should I get more excited about the Human Genome Project or CRISPR? I go back and forth.
I'd get excited about both of them, because you put them together, and it's going to be possible to start really curing all kinds of genetic diseases, as we are starting to do now with sickle cell disease and spinal muscular atrophy, and there's more to come. But you need both the genomics and you need the CRISPR, and you need to do it really carefully and really ethically, and then amazing, amazing miracles are going to happen.
Well, thank you again, and we will make sure that you receive a copy of the proclamation. So thank you for your service, and it is such an honor.
Thank you.
Honor is ours. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item under the mayor's report. Mr. Rosenberg, I'm going to give you a chance to address the issue of the snow, the pending snow for Sunday. Can you just give us a quick update of what the plans are by Public Works by the city as far as prepping for the snow on Sunday?
So we're actually scheduled, Madam Mayor, to have a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss that very subject. So I don't have details to share with you or the public presently. We're all aware that we stand to have a significant event starting mid-morning on Sunday and continuing through the entire day. And so we will be taking time tomorrow to game that out and make the appropriate plans. And I expect that we'll have some media announcements that are made during the course of the day tomorrow.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks.
Counselor, who are you? Darby. Long night.
I just have three quick things. But first, I would, I would like to say, you know, thank you to our wonderful healthcare providers. You know, this is a challenging time, and our first responders, they're working hard, and I just want to recognize their efforts and thank them for that. And then also, Stanton City Schools, if you're not aware, have started a Kindness Matters initiative. And tomorrow, January the fourteenth, it will be the first time this, this year in two thousand and twenty-two that all of the students and the staff and everyone in the school system will be practicing Kindness Matters. They're encouraging students to wear T-shirts. They got all the students shirts, I think, at least I know at the high school, and bracelets and doodads and things. And, you know, I just want to commend them for what a wonderful thing that they're, they're trying to help further instill in our young people, because it really does matter. And then the last thing is, I would like to extend best wishes to the incoming Yonkin administration. I think it's a very exciting time for our Commonwealth to have the leadership of Glenn Yonkin and Winsome Sears and Jason Maharris.
Thank you, Counselor Darby. Right. Are there any other items about members of council?
This is Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Doll.
I just want to mention that I attended the, the work group for affordable housing, and it's an initial meeting for that group because they were sidelined by COVID early on. And so I'm hopeful that we'll have exciting things coming out of that. The other item I wanted to bring up for sure is the fact that Monday, the seventeenth, is Martin Luther King Day. And even though the weather doesn't seem like it's going to be hospitable, I'm sure there will be Zoom events that you can attend. And at the very least, we need to have, our country needs to have reflection and spend the day reflecting on how we can make this a more perfect union. And a more perfect union means we include everyone. And I fear that we're so divided that it's become the, the thing to exclude people. And I personally welcome all races, all religions, or no religion, all ethnicities, genders, because that's what will make this country great again, that and nothing else.
Great. Moving on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Okay. You want to have it pulled up? All right. That's all right.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes, the work session and regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, as presented.
All right. Counselor Claffey has made a motion. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I'll second that.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Quamier, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The next item is under the regular meeting. Item A, a consideration of ordinance to amend the FY twenty-two budget for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number three. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Finance Officer Phil Trayer will present this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Trayer.
Thanks. Good to be back. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Before I start, just wanted to modify my answer to Ms. Mead from the work session. We have about fifteen point five million built into the CIP. That's ARPA-related or potential ARPA-related. Probably have an equal amount of non-CIP out there as well. We have about thirteen-plus million dollars of ARPA funds, so we have way more requests than we do money to honor those requests. Absolutely. You're welcome. Tonight, we are here to consider budget amendment number three for FY twenty-two. Budget amendment number three is this year's major budget amendment, which captures prior-year carryover grant award true-ups, new grant awards, donations, and insurance recoveries. Budget amendment number three totals twenty-one million, one fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, and does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised and held during the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. City portion of budget amendment equals fifteen million, six seventy, six hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. The school portion, five million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Details of budget amendment have been summarized in a packet and were reviewed during the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. It includes general fund provisions, including general government, four hundred and one thousand, judicial administration, sixty thousand, public safety, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, Public Works, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, Parks, Recreation, and Cultural, two hundred and forty-three thousand, Community Development, three hundred and thirty-five thousand. CIP transfers of six million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, includes one million, six hundred and seventy thousand to fund appropriations, the FY twenty-two, twenty-three CIP plan, two point five million dollars in reserve funds for future school construction projects, one point six million dollars in emergency radio project, three hundred and thirty-one thousand for police and animal control vehicles, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand for Public Works vehicles. Moving past CIP, we have three hundred thousand for Community Development, two hundred and ninety-three environmental funds, ten thousand for grant funds, education funds, five million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and we have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars school CIP adjustment. And finally, school-state operating program funds of sixty-seven thousand, four seventy. And the city manager recommends the approval of budget amendment number three as presented.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Trayer? Counselor Holmes?
Yes, sir.
Phil, you were talking earlier about the school system possibly having an increase in students.
Yes.
You're thinking it's going to be a noticeable increase.
Um, right now, with the Middlebrook Avenue project, Bessie Weller would, would feel the effects of that disproportionately. You would certainly get some secondary children, secondary education children. But normally, in a multifamily project, it's the elementary schools will, will be disproportionately impacted by that. I'm not exactly sure of the, the absorption rate. I think the schools are still in the process of trying to quantify an absorption rate for multi-housing units versus single housing units. And when we get that, we can probably make a little bit better.
And you also thought, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, also thought it would impact the high school also.
Yeah. Yeah. When we consider the old South subdivision, which is single-family homes, that, that is going to disproportionately impact the secondary education. All the subdivisions are going to have their own absorption rates, absorption rates, meaning the number of children that the schools are having to absorb. So, so all the subdivisions will impact that to some degree. It's just, like I said, the multifamily, normally younger families, single-family, normally more mature families.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Doll.
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget by adding budget amendment number three totaling twenty-one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars as presented.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I second that.
Counselor Darby seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Quamier, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trayer.
All right. The next item is item B, consideration of ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining section twelve point three, five point zero, one, zero, establishment of city market location, deleting sections twelve point three, five point zero, three, zero, rules and regulations, twelve point three, five point zero, four, zero, fees, and twelve point three, five point zero, six, zero, certificate required of chapter twelve point three, five, city market of Title Twelve, streets, sidewalks, and public places of the Stanton City Code. You can tell that was written by an attorney. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, City Attorney John Blair will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. As discussed at the work session, this particular code amendment is conforming the current practice of how the city's city market is conducted with the ordinance. The ordinance, as written, which it was adopted many years ago by council, conceived of the city market as a completely public operation operated by the city with a city employee as the market manager, as well as the city superintending the fiscal affairs of market. In recent years, the market has, in fact, been mainly administered by a private group, nonprofit group. In two thousand and twenty, and early two thousand and twenty-one, there have been discussions with that group that involve the city manager, and later in two thousand and twenty-one, myself, we've asked that group, which is now known as the Stanton Farmers Market, to become a nonprofit corporation, which they have. They have applied for a five oh one, C five tax designation from the IRS, which makes them a nonprofit agricultural organization. The ordinance amendments reflect that the city manager may contract with a nonprofit group, such as the Stanton Farmers Market, to operate the city market. The ordinance amendments do provide that the city manager must approve the rules and regulations of market. That includes producer certificates. It also includes fees and other aspects that affect the efficiency or safety of the market itself. As Mr. Rosenberg did state in the work session earlier today, or earlier this evening, there is going to be a change based on that agreement in which previously, the city had asked that each vendor sign a hold harmless provision, which in theory was to in some way mitigate risk to the city. Instead, the agreement that is being contemplated would have an actual indemnification as well as an insurance provision with the nonprofit corporation itself, and that would be a greater risk mitigation for the city. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? All right. Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Claffey.
I move that city council adopt the ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining section twelve point three, five point one, zero, one, zero, and deleting sections twelve point three, five point zero, three, zero, twelve point three, five point zero, four, zero, and twelve point three, five point zero, six, zero, of chapter twelve point three, five, city market of Title Twelve, streets, sidewalks, and public places of the Stanton City Code.
Right.
What a mouthful.
I have an urge to yell bingo. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Holmes?
A second.
We have a second. Any further-
That's the easy part.
Yeah. Any further discussion? All right. Ms. Quamier, if you can, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to item C, a consideration of ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining section five point zero, five point one, eight, zero, alcoholic beverages, chapter five point zero, five, businesses, professional occupation, and other license taxes. Article three, other licenses and taxes of Title Five, businesses, licenses, and regulations of the Stanton City Code. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Mr.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Blair will present this item as well.
Welcome back.
Thank you much, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a very minor amendment to conform the city's code to the state code. But I would take, if you give me a minute of indulgence, what you see before you, you see a lot of red. But really, the only thing that's changed outside of formatting here is subsection F, numerate 2B. It refers to a designated outdoor refreshment area license that's granted by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board of Virginia. It was previously called a special event that was granted, permit by granted by the ABC Board. But the indulgence I'd ask is that's the only substantive change. There's no real change except for that one redesignation of that particular regulatory function. But, you know, it's reformatted greatly. And I know you get kind of tired of the tongue twisters that are coming. But as we saw with the previous item as well, at some point, the city code was updated in '04. And at some point, we probably will want to do a recodification because there are a lot of aspects. It's been 18 years since there was the last recodification. And things like this that come before you, it's really about formatting and just conforming with state law changes. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is Carolyn Doll.
Councilor Doll.
Yes.
I just want to thank you for doing this work. I like for our ordinances to be in compliance with state law. What's not to like?
The attorney.
No. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
This is Carolyn Doll.
Counselor Doll.
I move that city council adopt the ordinance amending, restating and re-ordaining section 5.05.180, alcoholic beverages, chapter 5.05, business, professional occupation and other license taxes. Article three, other licenses and taxes of Title V, business licenses and regulations of the Stanton City Code, to align with changes to the Code of Virginia as enacted by the General Assembly.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
So move.
Right. So there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Quamir, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. That takes us on to item D. This was added on to the agenda. It's a discussion and possible consideration of an emergency order. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item was added to the agenda at the request of Councilmember Doll. I was not aware of the request before this evening's meeting, and so I have no comments offered to council at this time.
Counselor.
This is Carolyn Doll. I just thought, you know, as it seemed appropriate with Dr. Collins here, it was coincidental. But the fact that we're going to have to learn to live and adapt with COVID. And so as you may have seen, if you saw the email I forwarded everyone, Harrisonburg City Council has adopted a local emergency declaration for, I don't know if it's 30 or 45 days, just so that not only the council, but all their boards and commissions can meet virtually until this Omicron thing wears itself out. And so I thought, well, I'd bring it up because that's good, that may well be our future. There may be a wave coming every six months or whatever. And the smart thing would be just to do a time-limited local emergency and allow us to meet virtually as well as all of our associated boards and commissions. So I wanted to bring that up for discussion and possible consideration.
Are there any?
Madam.
Comments?
I was going to say.
Counselor Holmes.
Really affecting a lot of people these days. And I mean, I was closed on New Year's Eve because I didn't have enough staff. And you know what it's like to be closed on New Year's Eve if you're a restaurant? It's horrible. You know, it's the busiest day of the year. And, you know, and it's affecting, this thing is affecting people who have been inoculated, not just the people who have not been. And I mean, wearing a mask is really, I think, common sense. Maybe we need to wear two. I don't know. But I think that we have to be able to adjust on a more rapid base of pace than what we do now. So I agree with Carolyn. I would second that motion.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I would, I'm not sure that, I reckon I would say I would be okay to look at it maybe in the future, in the next, at our next council meeting. Because in all honesty, I would like to take a look at what, I mean, the Supreme Court basically came down today and did away with President Biden's mandate on companies 100 and greater. The new governor, from what I understand, is going, I mean, he's going to be sworn in Saturday, is going to do away with the state mandated mask mandate. Yeah, it may be something we go that route, but I would like to at least, I mean, we got two weeks to kind of take a look at it, see how the federal government deals with it, see how the state deals with it. And then we can, I mean, that's just, I'm just saying, put it out there. Let's take a look and see what the two different organizations or two different agencies are going to say. And then maybe we'll have a better.
Yeah. Great. We're going right now.
This is Carolyn Doll. I just want to clarify that the Supreme Court ruling has nothing to do, this, the local emergency, and John Blair or Rosenberg may have to, like, you know, provide the legalese. But it's based on state law. So that's not going to change in two weeks, or it's not going to change. And the mask mandate has nothing to do with this. This is a FOIA law, if I'm not mistaken.
And Carolyn, in all honesty, and correct me wrong, Mr. Rosenberg, I thought at one point you said that you were basing that on OSHA or whatever. I forget. You know, that was.
That was the vaccination, vaccination.
Mandate?
Yeah. It's a different thing.
Not the mask.
No, actually, so the mask requirement in city facilities is attributable to state regulations that are presently in effect. You're correct about that, Vice Mayor Robertson.
All right. Was there a question for Mr. Blair?
He's just going to maybe respond.
Or go ahead.
Let me just, you know, I think like everybody, it is a Byzantine, just you feel like you don't know one day to the next what's going on. So I'll just take a few of the things that have been said and try to give you a very brief overview. What the Supreme Court ruled on today, they actually, it's called a stay, and I won't get into the pure legalese. You know, you're more interested in results than truly going through the legal doctrine of what a stay means. But in effect, the Supreme Court today, OSHA had a regulation that required employers of 100 employees or greater to get vaccinated. The Supreme Court today issued a stay so that it will be referred back to a lower court for a hearing, but the stay will remain in effect. And if that lower court decides to rule for OSHA, the stay still will remain in effect until the Supreme Court rules. So that's vaccines. That's element one. A corollary to that, there was another regulation that applied to federal healthcare facilities, requiring them to have their employees fax federally funded healthcare facilities. The Supreme Court upheld that regulation. But that's vaccines. Mask, as Mr. Rosenberg stated, Virginia's OSHA requirements, we are under a state plan. There are 22 states that fall under what's called an OSHA state plan. And we have a Virginia, I think it's, I'm forgetting the exact term, but the health code boards is part of that in terms of administering our state OSHA plan. While the mask is administered by that state body, I believe it's called Virginia Safety Codes, or it's, I forget the exact acronym, but that's a state mandate. We will see with a new administration that comes in Saturday whether they will make changes in the immediate future about mask in the workplace, but that's really at the state level. And then finally, Ms. Doll, you're talking about a local declaration of emergency that would allow city council and other boards and commissions to meet virtually rather than convening physically four of you here. All of you could meet virtually with a local declaration of emergency. Now, what I would like to point out is that Governor Northam issued a state of emergency. He called it a limited state of emergency, but it occurred, I believe, on Monday. I'm, I believe, Monday. The state code, there was an amendment to FOIA last year that said if the governor declares a state of emergency, local public bodies can meet virtually. But it requires notice that you're meeting virtually. You know, you can't, if you've noticed you're meeting, that you're meeting physically at city hall to comply with FOIA, you're going to need, still need that physical quorum. You, as a council, as a public body, you can do what Ms. Doll has stated or requested, which is declare a state of emergency locally. Or you, as a council, you are a separate public body, each city board and commission is a separate public body, can say pursuant to the governor's state of emergency, which does expire February 11th. From this date forward until February 11th, we want our meetings noticed that they will meet virtually rather than in person in council chambers. And you have that option as well. But the executive order, the state of emergency expires February 11th. So I know you have a meeting next week on the 19th. You have the 27th, and I believe, is it the 10th or 11th is your first February? But you could probably get in three meetings doing virtually, but you'd have to notice them as meeting virtually, not in council chambers.
The 10th.
And do you have any idea how many boards and commissions that this would apply to?
Well.
Now, we have a nominations committee meeting coming up. We have, I know already that one of the local commissions that I am liaison for was unable to meet in January because they couldn't get a quorum of people to show up physically. People are concerned about this disease. I know another organization, I am liaison to the Stanton Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and that organization will be meeting virtually because they feel this governor's, the governor has given them the authority to do so. So it isn't just city council meetings.
Correct.
There are meetings taking place all over the city that require that people get together and breathe. This, I mean, by the time we get out of here tonight, I will have been sitting here for four hours breathing this air. And it just exposes, it's an unnecessary exposure of people to the risk of a disease that we as leaders in this community could respond to the people in this community and not, you know, we don't need to look to Richmond. We don't have to look to Washington, DC. We can protect our citizens right here in Stanton. And that's, to me, is our job. So I think it goes beyond just a few city council meetings. I think it goes deeply into the community.
Well, what I would say to that is, I was just speaking to you as council. Under FOIA, each board and commission is a public body, and it has the ability, if it wishes, to meet virtually until February 11th, under the state of emergency issued by the governor. But it has to notice that it's meeting virtually. It can't notice it's meeting here and then pop up meeting virtually.
Mr. Blair, I know like the city manager can declare a state of emergency if there's a big snowstorm. How does that apply when it comes to this situation?
Well, I don't have the code in front of me, but if I'm not, if my memory's not faulty, he can declare a state of emergency, the city manager may. However, he has to come to council immediately and ask you to ratify that declaration. So for instance, he couldn't declare an emergency right now because you're meeting. You know, the point is that ultimately, the council, the governing body has the ability and should ratify that declaration of emergency. That the point of, you know, the local declaration of emergency is ultimately, it does rest in the elected officials' hands. While the city manager or county administrator can declare one, they have to immediately go to council and ask for ratification. And Mr. Rosenberg, am I recalling that correctly? I believe.
Yeah. So the ratification, I believe, has to occur at the next regularly scheduled meeting or within a certain number of days, whichever occurs first, if I'm recalling correctly.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
Well, this is Carolyn Doll again. You know, I just want us to work smart because I think this is going to happen again and again. And we have the technology, we spent the money, and we have a lot of older folks that are interested in coming to meetings, but then they don't, they won't, or they won't, as Ms. Mead said, won't be able to attend their board or commission because of their concerns. So if we just do this thing, and really, if it lasts through February 11th, fine, you know, because maybe by then, Omicron will be here and gone. So that's all I'm asking. And I'd like to put it in the form of a motion, and we'll just, we can just have a vote on it in terms of having a move that we declare a local emergency declaration in force through the governor's, the state time, if you say that's February, I don't know what date that is, but.
11th.
Yeah, through February 11th.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Brenda Mead.
Counselor Mead is second. Any further discussion? I need a point of clarification. The boards and commissions, they can decide themselves.
They have that independent authority until February 11th, is what the FOIA Advisory Council is now, is saying. It's each public body has that authority.
Which includes city council.
Includes city council. For instance, Ms. Doll's made that motion to have a local emergency declared. If you didn't want to go that far, you could just say pursuant to the governor's executive order, we will have virtual meetings as a city council through February 11th.
And I'm not opposed to, you know, whatever the language can be that ends up with the same result, I'm for it.
Mr. Rosenberg, we offer live streaming for city council meetings. That's a question.
That's correct.
All right. All right. Ms. Quamir, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Mayor Oaks?
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
No, not at this time.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
The motion fails.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blair. That takes us on to item E, a public hearing concerning the. That takes us on to item E, a public hearing concerning the Augusta County Courthouse, Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, do I understand correctly that council would like me to. Proceed, well, let me say, this item was added to the regular meeting agenda on a vote of council. At, during its work session.
That is correct.
Do I understand that council would like me to proceed with the presentation that I was prepared, excuse me, prepared to make. Earlier this week and earlier this evening?
Counselor Claffey, you made the motion.
Yes.
So if you'll give, I'll need a moment to, to set up.
Certainly.
To ma, to make the presentation.
During that time, we will take a five-minute break. All right, we're back from break. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
No, it's a Wednesday.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the matter before you this evening broadly concerns. A possible arrangement between Augusta County and the city of Stanton. Involving Augusta County's court facilities located in the city. This arrangement was previously considered by council at its meeting on December ninth of two thousand and twenty-one. Before I delve into the details of the arrangement, let me first briefly provide some context. The condition of the county's court facilities in the city, all of which are owned by the county. Has been an issue for years. Progress on widely recognized needed improvements to the facilities has proved elusive. Despite engagement between the city and the county for more than a decade. Today, there is a pending court proceeding initiated last September by the Circuit Court for the Twenty-Fifth Judicial Circuit. Regarding the condition of the city's Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. That court, though a city court, is located in the county's General District Courts Building on Johnson Street. There is a similar proceeding pending concerning the condition of all three of the county's courts located in the city. Its Circuit Court, its General District Court, and its Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. The judicial proceedings require both the county and the city to take certain actions to address the current condition. Of their respective court facilities. Once those proceedings were commenced, there was renewed dialogue between representatives of the city and the county about the future of the county's court facilities in the city. That dialogue included several meetings between county representatives and city representatives. During the renewed dialogue, as they had previously, the parties discussed a possible financial contribution by the city. To construction of a new court facility in the city, a new county court facility in the city. By a letter dated November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. The county very clearly communicated to the city that it has no desire to move forward with a project in the city. Even with such a financial contribution. And that it intends to pursue construction of a new court facility in Verona. With that communication, city council and members of the city's management team. Began to seriously consider whether the city might come to control the county-owned properties in the city. Located as they are at one of our major downtown intersections. And their future uses. With direction from council. City staff pursued that possibility with county staff. Resulting in the proposed arrangement between the two localities. As first announced publicly in a statement issued by the city on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. On December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Augusta County Board of Supervisors conducted a public hearing. Legally required before any conveyance of its properties to the city. At the same meeting, the board approved a proposed memorandum of understanding between the county and the city. On December ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, the next day, city council was scheduled to consider the same memorandum of understanding. And a related resolution generally approving the proposed arrangement. At that meeting, council voted six to one to postpone consideration until November ten, two thousand and twenty-two. A date after the date of a proposed county referendum. And that brings us where we are today. As I did at council's meeting on December ninth, let me review with you in detail the proposed arrangement between the city and the county. At its essence, it includes two elements. The county would convey five properties to the city at no cost. Those five properties shown here. Include. The county's historic courthouse. Its district courts building across Johnson Street. The former county jail. And historic residence adjacent to the district courts building. And a vacant lot. Though tax exempt, the properties are presently assessed by the city with a value just over two million dollars. In exchange for the conveyance of the properties, city council would take a position supporting the enactment of legislation. That would permit the county to conduct a referendum in November of two thousand and twenty-two. Four years sooner than permitted under current law. To allow the voters of the county to determine where to locate the county's court facilities. City Attorney John Blair will address the status of the legislation. Later in this presentation. The proposed arrangement is embodied in two documents. That council has seen previously. A proposed memorandum of understanding and a proposed resolution. Both of which have been slightly revised since council's meeting on December ninth. If adopted, the resolution would do two things. Approve the memorandum of understanding. And express council's support of the proposed resolution. Procedurally, here is where matters stand. This evening. Council will receive this presentation and public comment. Bear with me here, I, I was prepared to present this in a different context, I'm just working through my notes here. So I will say that if council determines to move forward at some point with the proposed arrangement. Though there is some element of uncertainty until a vote is actually taken. It is my understanding, based on conversations with the Augusta County Administrator. That a majority of the board of supervisors continues to support the proposed arrangement between the city and the county. As you all know, the General Assembly convened yesterday. Senator Emmett Hanger and Delegate John Avoli have introduced legislation in the current session of the General Assembly. Which if adopted, would authorize a November referendum on the location of the county's court facilities. And as has been mentioned. We understand that the legislators intend to seek passage of the legislation, whether or not the city agrees to the proposed arrangement. Because it is a special act addressing an issue of local concern. Adoption of the legislation requires an affirmative vote by two-thirds of each of the hut, of the two houses of the General Assembly. And once enacted, the legislation, like all bills, must be approved by the governor of Virginia. And when approved, would become effective on July first of two thousand and twenty-two. If all of this were to occur, the county would then be authorized to conduct a referendum on November eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. Without diving too deeply, in the event the result of the referendum is to approve the relocation of the county's courts to Verona. The actual conveyance of the county-owned properties to the city. Would not occur until the county's occupancy of a new court facility. That date is likely several years away, as the county must first design, finance, and construct its court facility. During the intervening period of time, in anticipation of its acquisition of the properties. The city could undertake its own detailed planning process. Ultimately facilitating decisions about the future uses of the properties by the city or other parties. Subject to further study, the properties may be suitable to meet some needs of the city. For example, for several years, the city's capital improvement plan has included a new facility for the police department. Which has outgrown its space in City Hall. Staff have been searching for an appropriate location. The county's General District Courts Building could potentially meet this need. Additionally, if the proposed arrangement with the county moves forward. The city will need space to house the city's Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. Currently administered jointly with the county's court and located in the county's General District Courts Building on Johnson Street. The joint administration and co-location of the county and city juvenile courts. Cannot continue if the county's courts move to Verona. Because the city's court must be located within the city limits. Under one scenario, the city's Circuit Court could be relocated to the county's historic courthouse. From its present location in the Cochrane Judicial Center. Which could then be partially renovated to house the city's juvenile court. Even if the city determines not to use the county-owned properties for its purposes. And that is certainly a possibility. There may still be a benefit to the city associated with their acquisition. Some members of council and the public may recall that in two thousand and five, at no cost. The city acquired from the Commonwealth of Virginia, the former Stanton Correctional Center. Located at the intersection of Richmond and Greenville Avenue. The city sold the property valued at the time at approximately four million dollars. For a price of approximately one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Significantly less than its valuation. That was the starting point for the transformation of the property into today's Villages at Stanton Development. Similar opportunities. May exist for private sector uses of the county-owned properties subsequent to their acquisition by the city. With the potential to catalyze commercial activity in this part of the city. Including, for example, the long vacant Eccles Building, Lawyers Row, and Barrister's Row. Finally, let me address some financial issues related to the county-owned properties and the city's possible acquisition of them. First, we have previously furnished a council data concerning the operating cost incurred by the county. Over the last few years for the four out of the five properties that are improved with buildings. Those costs, as reported to us by the county, have ranged from a low of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. To a high of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Though the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one cost includes significant non-recurring flood cleanup and abatement expenses. Such operating costs would not be the responsibility of the city until the date on which it actually acquires the properties several years from now. And after that acquisition, during any period that the buildings are not occupied, we can expect the operating costs to be reduced. Second, more recently, we've also provided estimates of the costs to renovate the historic courthouse. And the General District Courts Building for use by the city. As noted in my email to council dated January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, these estimates are subject to various qualifications and assumptions. Far too numerous to detail here. But as I stated in my email, I cannot overemphasize the preliminary nature of the estimates that follow. Before sharing the estimates, let me remind you of two facts. First, the city's capital improvement plan already includes a scheduled project for the police department. To which the city has committed. Second, if the county succeeds in obtaining voter approval to move its courts to the county, by whatever means. The city will need space, as I've said, to house the city's Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. What this means is that in certain circumstances, only the renovation of the historic courthouse. Is an avoidable or discretionary project. While the police department need not be located in a renovated General District Courts Building. It must be located somewhere with the costs to be incurred by the city. Sorry. So with this background, let me share the estimates with you. The estimated cost to renovate the historic courthouse for the city's use as a judicial facility. Would fall within a range between ten point five and nineteen point seven million dollars. The estimated cost to renovate the General District Courts Building for the city's use as a law enforcement facility. Would fall within a range between twelve point eight million and twenty-eight point three million dollars. Finally, we've also furnished you information about the city's capacity to incur debt to finance the renovation of one or more of the buildings, once they are acquired by the city. Generally, the analysis completed by the city's Chief Finance Officer Phil Traer. Shows an additional eighteen million dollars in debt capacity. Will be available for capital projects, assuming, one, two and a half million dollars of debt is issued in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four for design. Two, fifteen point seven five million dollars of debt is issued. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six for construction. Three, tax rates and the city's capital improvement plan remain unchanged. Four, bonds are issued at an interest rate of three percent. And five, bonds are amortized over a thirty-year period. Notably, any such renovations can be phased and need not be undertaken simultaneously. Let me stress that there are many variable, variables at play. For example, an increase of the interest rate to three and a half percent. Reduces the debt capacity by one and a quarter million dollars. As another example, a deferral of the debt issuance by one year increases the capacity by two million dollars. In closing, I am aware of many questions whether the city has conducted various tests, studies. Investigations and other analyses of the county-owned properties. The time available to staff driven by the General Assembly calendar. The city has been unable to undertake the more comprehensive assessments of the properties that no doubt are necessary. And appropriate. As I've mentioned previously, those assessments would be completed at a later date. In the event council determines to move forward with the proposed arrangement. The results of those assessments would then inform the city's decision whether to use some or all of the properties itself. Or to pursue their private sector reuse. Understandably, this gives rise to the question whether there is a risk to the city in moving forward without the assessments. The answer is unequivocally yes. However, I have summarized two different paths forward where the city to acquire the properties. One involving city uses of the properties, and the other involving their private sector reuse. That to some extent would mitigate that risk. I also suggest to council that the city will encounter a different risk if, if the city does not pursue the proposed arrangement with the county. In that event, if the county is eventually authorized by its voters to relocate its court facilities to the county. Whether in two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-six. The county-owned buildings in the city, located at the core of the city's central business district. Might sit vacant and unused for an extended period of time. The county might have little, if any, motivation to transfer the buildings to the city. The county might have little, if any, motivation to transfer the buildings to the city without cost to the city as presently proposed. The choice then, it seems, is which risk to assume. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Blair so that he can review the status of the pending legislation with you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, Council. What I'd like to go over tonight is Senator Hanger, as has been stated earlier in the meeting, introduced a bill today concerning this matter. It is also, as you've received from Mr. Rosenberg, the county, Augusta County is would like to make some amendments to that legislation that Senator Hanger has proposed. So let's talk about, and again, I'm going to try to keep this at a high level, not get completely wrapped around the axle and legalese. Senator Hanger's legislation would allow, if it passes both houses of the general assembly with two-thirds of each house and is signed by the governor, it would allow Augusta County to have a referendum this November concerning the location of its court facilities. Now, Senator Hanger's legislation requires that Augusta County develop plans, one, for moving its court facilities to Augusta County, as well as one for the renovation and expansion of its courthouse here in the city. The county would have to present or make these plans available to the public three months before the election, so that would be approximately August the eighth. If the voters of Augusta County do not choose to move their courthouse to Verona, then the plan developed for the courthouse remaining in Stanton has to be with a mutual agreement. That's the language used here. Now, that's a little unclear, but mutual agreement with the city of Stanton. That's if we have to, as a city, agree with them on their implementation of the plan. But Senator Hanger's legislation also requires, as was stated earlier, it's binding. It uses the term binding. Now, the county, and let me explain this because this is the more legalese part. Senator Hanger's legislation does not allow the county to use a different ballot question. It would have to use the same ballot question that it used in twenty sixteen. And that ballot question is set out in the Code of Virginia and it states, shall the courthouse be removed to, and they would place Augusta County in the blank, and shall the board of supervisors be permitted to spend blank dollars therefore? So they would have to, that's the question per Senator Hanger's legislation that would appear on their ballot if that legislation passes. Now, again, they'll have to develop plans and make them to the public for both options, but the question itself is solely about moving the court facility to Verona for a certain amount of dollars, yes or no? The county is asking for some changes in this, and I won't get into the technical changes, but I think the most important parts are two. First, they would like a different referendum question. And that referendum question, to summarize, would put out both, both options for their voters. Pick one. Move the county court facilities to Augusta for this price or the county courthouse shall remain in the city of Stanton for this price. So instead of the ballot question from twenty sixteen, which was yes or no to move the facility for a certain cost, this question that Augusta County would like the legislation amended to show would say, county courthouse moves to Verona for this cost, you can pick that option, or it can stay in the city of Stanton for this cost, you can pick that option. The other major difference in what the county's amendments that they'd like to see enacted by the general assembly is they do not want the phrase, the result of the referendum shall be binding. And I don't want to read too much into that, but obviously, I think part of that may be that they would want other bites at the apple if they don't like the result by removing the binding language. So that's, I think, a high-level view of sort of the differences. You've got the bill proposed by Senator Hanger. It maintains the original ballot question. It is also binding. The county would like the legislation amended by the general assembly, and they would like a choice. Move the facility to Verona for this cost, keep the city and keep the facilities in Stanton for this cost, and they do not want the referendum to be binding. Just to explain, this has been referred, Ms. Meads sent an email to council today. It's been referred to the Privileges and Elections Committee and State Senate. It very well may go to counties, cities, and towns as well. So there's committee process in the senate. If it makes it out of this committee process, it goes to the full senate. They would have to, again, by two-thirds vote, approve it. If they do, what's called crossover day, it would go to the House of Delegates. It would be referred to the appropriate committees there. They would also have a chance to amend it there, and then it would come to the full house for a vote. And then if two-thirds of the House of Delegates and two-thirds of the state senate approve of it, it would go to the governor, and the governor could veto or side.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions by council members? Councilor Holmes?
I have one for Mr. Rosenberg. Steve, do you have any idea what the tax credits would be on the, what the percentage might be? Courthouse? Because if we transferred it over to economic development, it would be eligible for tax credits, and that could considerably cut the cost, I would think, of a lot of the innovations.
Yeah, so, Mr. Holmes, I sent to council members earlier in the week some documentation related to the city's prior offers made to the county, and one of those detailed the benefit of the tax credits when the county was still considering those renovations. And if you all continue your discussion, I may be able to put my fingers on that to answer your question.
Are they?
Wasn't this last, the last election supposed to have been binding for the county?
That language is not in the statute that the, and in fact, the statute, the state statute permits every ten years they can have another ballot question, so no, the language itself was not binding in twenty sixteen.
Right, any other questions? Mr. Rosenberg, the figures you presented, those are just a preliminary amount, not based off of any feasibility studies.
Yeah, they're extremely preliminary. You know, I think to summarize Mr. Johnston's approach, he looked for and found other projects that had been procured for similar facilities. He was able to ascertain the cost of those projects and determine a per-square-foot cost of actual projects, and then applied that factor using the square footage of the two buildings here in the city. And that's what we got. So, Mr. Holmes, to answer your question, this is in twenty fifteen, six years ago, seven years ago, the estimated value of state historic tax credits at that time was two million dollars.
Imagine it's gone up since then?
I don't know.
I have a question.
Councilor Mead.
Mr. Rosenberg, from that email you just referred to, I think it might be helpful. You know, many people feel that, you know, maybe the negotiations have been, you know, we haven't done enough, we've not tried to work with the county, we haven't, we haven't proffered any financial offers that we haven't thought about consolidation of courthouse. Many people have those notions, and so I think it might be useful if you would read, starting, I think it was in January of twenty fifteen, from that email, not the entire proposal, but just at least a a dollar figure associated with the, with the offers that the city made over the period of essentially twelve months to work with the county to handle this courthouse situation.
So, the county and the city were fully engaged on these issues in twenty fifteen for several months at that time. And there initially was really, you know, I think not much willingness on the part of the city to make any sort of financial contribution, and that that message was essentially communicated in January of twenty fifteen by then-mayor Dull. And as the year progressed, the city began to see things differently. City council saw things differently. So there were a series of proposals that were put on the table. One in March of twenty fifteen that the city valued at about two point six million dollars. That included that two million dollars of state historic tax credits as well as an actual contribution to construction costs of five hundred thousand dollars. And then subsequent to that, you know, which I think was not positively received by the county in June, there was a contribution offered in the amount of five million dollars, and that comprised one point six million in state historic tax credits and three point four million dollars in an actual cash contribution. Again, for a total aggregate value of five million. And then finally, in twenty fifteen, there was a more robust offer or proposal made to contribute twenty-five percent of the actual project costs not to exceed. The assumption was the project cost would not exceed fifty million dollars, and the city would agree to pay up to twenty-five percent of those costs.
And that was contingent on?
Yes, that's correct. Now, more recently, earlier this year or last year, there was an agreement reached between the city and the county, which is memorialized in a memorandum of understanding that has now been superseded or really is ineffective at this point. The city agreed to purchase the general district courts building and the former city jail from the county if the county succeeded in contracting to purchase and actually acquiring the the bank building across Augusta Street, and that that MOU provided for a payment of one point eight million dollars to the county, provided the county actually acquired the bank building for a new project. So that summarizes the the proposals that have been made along the way by the city. You know, most of them in twenty fifteen, when the localities last engaged in earnest on the subject, and then the most recent proposal that I've described.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg, the building, the bank building, the Atlantic Union Bank building that you're referring to, the county was looking at purchasing. Did the county ever come to the city to request assistance with purchasing that building as far as the cost was concerned?
Well, Madam Mayor, I don't recall. It's possible that they did, but, you know, what I think we wound up where we did because we wanted the city to be able to show something for the contribution, and that something was the acquisition of the two buildings. And whether the city was going to use them or even demolish them, for example, to create a linear park, a pocket park to daylight the creek, to add an amenity to the city. So, I think that some of the earlier discussions, it was suggested that the city would make a contribution.
Towards the purchase of the bank building?
Yes, but but we, you know, I think we consciously sort of redirected that and made this proposal that a contribution might be made if the county received something in exchange for the funds that it would provide. And it was with the understanding that the county would use, you know, we understood that the county would use those funds to defray the cost of the acquisition of the bank building.
Right, remind me of the date of that one point eight million dollar offer?
The MOU is dated January fifth, twenty twenty-one.
So that would have been during the tenure of the city council.
That's correct.
We offered one point eight million dollars to Augusta County to purchase the very buildings that they are currently offering to sell to us for one dollar.
The MOU included a provision that the city would pay one point eight million dollars in exchange for the general district courts building and the former county jail.
The Augusta County courts would stay in the city of Stanton if they were able to purchase the bank building.
That's correct.
All right, Councilor Claffey.
Do we have the dollar figure that the Augusta County rumors that was the cheapest dollar they could arrange to obtain the Atlantic Union Building?
I was not privy to any of those discussions, Mr. Claffey. My understanding is that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars.
And it is appraised at approximately?
Significantly less than that.
Less than fifty percent of them?
I believe so, yes.
And that would be included if they are able to get Emmen Hanger's proposal in there where they have the two lines, you know, the relocation to the county will cost X dollars, and to stay in Stanton will cost Y dollars. They own the property in Augusta County, so therefore that's going to be a lower dollar figure. The Stanton cost is going to include an inflated eight-million-dollar property for the Atlantic Union Building. And we have not seen, we never saw an offer that it was going to be eight million. We just heard rumors that we can't touch that building because it's too expensive. Is that correct?
I've never seen any, I don't believe that I've seen any documentation concerning the actual negotiated price between the county and the bank. I would add that I, I would add that you're, uh, you're likely, you're, you're correct about the inflation or the additional cost factor if they choose to build on the bank property. If that's the option, if, at one time, the county was considering demolition of the general district courts building and construction of a new facility on that property, which of course the county owns. And what, what I understand is that they've opted not to pursue that because of its vulnerability to flooding. But we don't, we won't know what their proposal is until we see their proposal. So it's within the realm of some possibility that, you know, if they can't acquire the bank property and their only alternative is the general district courts building site, that that, that's still in play. And then there would be no additional land costs associated with the project in the city.
And that was the whole point while we got the letter from the county saying that they were not interested in, in building in the city when it, when it came down to that, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
When, when the county issued that letter after the, uh, what was the date? At the November meeting where they said, we are not interested in building in Stanton, it was because they had this, this, they, they were not willing to build on the property that they owned, the south, where the four out of the five properties are that we're supposed to acquire. The jail, the circuit court, the, the residence and the parking lot. They have said that they can't build there. It's not worthy of anything to them. But yet they, they intend for us to take them. Now, I'm not saying anything about the Augusta County Courthouse across the street. I recognize that as a valuable building. But if they have deemed that this, their land is not worthy of them building on, it becomes a moot point.
They also have to take into account that they don't want to be in the city. You know, I mean, you know, they, you know, they, they don't, they don't want to, they just don't want to build in the city. And that's been, that's been common knowledge for the whole time I've been on city council.
But I do hope that the people here tonight for the public hearing are, are hearing the fact that offers have been thought out, bandied back and forth, and the stone wall is, is reached pretty, pretty quickly when you come to the county. They don't want to be here. And, and therefore my question becomes, well, why do I want to build five or obtain four out of the five county sites if they don't even think they're worthy of building? But anyway, I think we're, we're missing a public hearing opportunity. And that was the point. Let's, let's get on with the public hearing.
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
No, I just said, we need to hear from them.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, um, Mr. Rosenberg and Mr. Blair. Okay, we are going to have a public hearing. As you can tell, this is very, um, new. This is very early in the process. Uh, we're still gathering a lot of information. Uh, there's still a lot of questions. If you have questions, we'll be happy to record them. If we're able to answer them, we'll get back in touch with you. Um, it may be questions that we do not have the answers at this time, but, um, anyway. All right, the public hearing, in a moment, I will open, open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during the public hearing, you also will be able to raise your hand during the council meeting for other public hearings and matters from the public and keep your comment, comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open up the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium and we'll alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. All right. When I bang the gavel, that'll open up the public hearing. And when I bang it a second time, that'll close the public hearing out. With that, the public hearing is now open. Welcome.
Good evening. Joanne Tiger, 913 North Augusta Street. Haven't seen you all for a while. Good evening. Kindness matters, the theme of Stanton City Schools. And that should be the theme of everyone every day. Why kindness does matter, not just for those of school age, not just for one day, one week or one month of the year. Kindness does matter and should not just be a slogan. As Counselor Holmes alluded to during his reflection time, this council is in great need of kindness and respect for one another. A perfect example of a lack of kindness and even general respect for one another was shown on Tuesday night. Many of you couldn't be bothered to show up for the informational meeting. Those of us who were here wanted to know more information about the courthouse situation. We just didn't know what was going on. We have questions about the courthouse issues. We pay taxes. We're entitled to know what is happening and how it will affect us and our pocketbooks. It takes no more effort to be kind than to be unkind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Cormier, Ms. Cormier, do we have anyone with her?
Zach is running that tonight.
There you are. Okay. All right. Can we go ahead and take the first one?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Allison. I live at Farrier Court in Stanton. Um, I'm first of all disappointed that a public hearing wasn't properly held, like where there was actual notice for people to know that they should show up or call in for this. But I'm especially disappointed in what Mr. Claffey just said. I don't think that just because Augusta County doesn't want to build where those buildings are, that doesn't mean that they're completely worthless. I think he's trying to twist this around to whatever your agenda is. I think that buying any building for a dollar is, is worth it because if you are creative and put your heads together and work together, you can come up with, I'm sure, a lot of uses for it. I mean, Mr. Rosenberg's, um, presentation made that clear. And, and I certainly trust him more than I trust most of you sitting up there to know what the possibilities are for those properties. So I just want to make sure that everyone listening understands that the way that Mr. Claffey is trying to twist this is not accurate, that just because the county doesn't want to build there, it doesn't mean that those properties are worthless. It just means they don't want to build there. And they've repeatedly made that clear that they don't want to be in the city of Stanton. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ingrid Blanton. I'm at 217 North Madison Street. Um, I'd like to start by first thanking Mr. Rosenberg for really excellent, comprehensive presentation, which finally, for the first time, really made clear to me, um, what has been going on in the last couple of months and was exactly the kind of information I and many others were seeking to hear when we came on Tuesday. And several of you determined that that was not worth your time, apparently. So it's kind of ironic that you're doing the same thing tonight that would have been done on Tuesday. Having heard this presentation, I will say that I now think that the proposal to work with the county is really the best option for going forward. I would have supported, uh, that, that memorandum, the resolution that was essentially tabled last month. And I hope that it will be reconsidered and that we look at moving forward with the proposed arrangement with the county. But I'd like to go back to why this was not done on Tuesday and what your actions or inactions really said to many of the citizens of Stanton. And I will read to you an email that I sent early yesterday morning to the entire city council of which, for which I got no response. Dear Mayor Oaks, Councilman Claffey and Councilman Darby, Councilwoman Darby, why? Why were you not in attendance at the special meeting yesterday regarding the Augusta County Courthouse? I rearranged my schedule to attend as I, like many other Stanton citizens, was interested in learning more about the courthouse issue. There was also a considerable number of city staff in attendance to make presentations and to help answer citizens' questions. Finally, I could see from Facebook feeds that there were people attending the meeting virtually. You stood us all up and why? Rather than me or others speculating as to your reasons, I urge you to provide us a complete and candid explanation for your absence. In a vacuum, your absence appears to have been a total abdication of your most basic responsibility to the citizens of Stanton, that being to show up. It's that simple and you failed. Why? Lest you think that was just a rhetorical question, it was not. It was, and until you respond, continues to be an open question. You owe it to the citizens of Stanton to explain why our time is apparently less valuable than your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a caller? One? Okay, go ahead. Do, do we have one?
Hello?
Hello? Yeah, my name? Go ahead.
You're ready for me? Okay. My name is Cindy Connors. I live at 106 Skyline Avenue. I too want to thank Mr. Rosenberg for the excellent and super informative presentation. It's very helpful. And I wanted to thank the city council members that called the special, um, meeting on Tuesday night. I was one of the folks trying to attend virtually. And I won't repeat what was said before, but I echo, um, the disappointment of the other speakers regarding the canceling of the meeting. As far as the courthouse issue itself goes, um, I ha, I do have a specific question. If the Stanton City Council were to vote to support the memorandum as it's written currently, um, and thus pledged to support the legislation at the state capitol, does that in turn imply or require the city of Stanton to support any amendments proposed by Augusta County's Board of Supervisors? Um, because some of those give me audita, for example, the changing of the referendum language to manipulate the possible vote. So I'd like, I'd actually like an answer to that question, whether that we would have to support those amendments. And as far as my position on supporting the memorandum as it stands and acquiring the buildings from Augusta County, I do support the city of Stanton signing the memorandum as it stands, uh, to, so that they can acquire those buildings for a dollar from Augusta County, should they move. I don't support them, the Augusta County moving, um, to Verona, but the reality is it looks like they very well could. And in that case, the best thing for Stanton is to acquire those buildings for a dollar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hi, welcome.
Welcome. Hello, my name is Craig Sheaves. I live on Chamberlain Drive here in Stanton. I come here tonight in support of relocating the Augusta County Court system. It's obvious the space no longer accommodates the demand for the court system and expanding the building isn't in the option. So what happens next? In my travels, I've seen old churches and courthouses convert, converted into welcome centers with museums and/or art exhibits. Would this work in our situation? I do not know, but I do know this. The council has a great opportunity ahead. Good luck and thank you. I had planned on giving that statement last Tuesday. Now I find myself writing another. This educational information was published by the Virginia Local Government Management Association Education Project. On page six, it states, "The council manager form of government was invented in Stanton, Virginia in 1908. Over time, most cities have had larger populations, more physical facilities to take care of, more employees and larger budgets than most counties. So the tradition of professionalism in public administration is particularly deeply ingrained in the cities." Page 11 ends with, "By contrast, local government has more room to consider long-range matters. This level, especially in Virginia, with its tradition of professionalism and muted partisanship, may have unpredictated capacity to identify what needs to be done to prepare for the future and to do something about it." Muted, adjective, not expressed strongly or openly. Example, muted anger. Partisanship, a noun, prejudice in favor of a particular cause. Example, an act of blatant political partisanship. What contrast we find ourselves in now from a city pioneering ideas of, for local government to a shell of itself disgraced by three elected officials who plot to hide from the public, who then create excuses in disingenuous press statements. Quote, "If you lose your wealth, you have lost nothing. If you lose your health, you have lost something. But if you lose your character, you have lost everything." Woodrow Wilson, 28th U.S. President. "It is against my faith to judge others. However, I can no longer sit quietly. I pray for this council that it may redeem itself in the public's eyes. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. All right, anyone, all right? If anyone else would like to approach the podium? Welcome.
Good evening. My, uh, Matt Fitzgerald, I live at 261 Thorn Rose. Uh, I, I was here as well Tuesday night and, um, ended up emailing my comments to all of you. Appreciate you, uh, taking time to read them. Just want to, I'm not going to read the whole thing again, just going to hit on a few points. First of all, thanks for taking the time to, tonight, and really in terms of your decisions made during the work, work session to, um, to take some more time to study, um, the situation at hand. As Mr. Rosenberg alluded to, so a lot of, and it's nice to have this info. I mean, I guess you guys have already had it for some time, but it's nice to be able to, to see some of this info presented. But as he alluded to, it's, it's very preliminary. And, um, as I said in my note, you know, development is hard. It's really hard. It's not something that is easily done. And it's not something, you know, the good developers are the ones that take the time to do due diligence to manage the risk as much as possible. And the bad developers usually aren't around to deliver another day anyway. So, um, I, I think taking this time is, is, hopefully it's well spent on your part to, to do this due diligence, to find out what these buildings hold, what they can yield. I'm on record that, you know, I really wish that the county was staying in downtown, I think, just for, for, for history's sake, for tradition's sake, for preservation's sake, for economic vitality's sake. It, it, it checks all the boxes and I, I wish they were still here and, and it pains me to see that, that everybody seems to think that it's, they're gone or as good as gone. Regarding the MOUs and some of the other discussions that have gone before this, this committee and most, this most recent one under consideration, you know, I, I, I think, I would just, my, my viewpoint is that, um, you know, bargaining positions and discussion of bargaining positions is a and discussion of bargaining positions is a matter of perception. And to talk about bargaining positions in a public forum, you know, it kind of gives away your hand to the county. And there have been plenty of times when you guys have gone into closed sessions to talk about financial interests regarding purchase of properties or not. So I mean, you know, we see the county now going to, they'll be going to Richmond on Lobby Day to lobby for those amendments that the city attorney just talked about. They're pretty shrewd, and they're, you know, I don't know that they're discussing all their intents and where their bargaining positions are or not. We should be aggressively negotiating this at every step as much as possible and every way possible. You know, a dollar sounds like a nice figure, but I mean, until you know what you get, you don't know what that dollar's going to get you. And if it's going to saddle you with a lot of new debt that makes the project unmanageable or unsellable. And even the Robin Millers of the world, you know, can only accommodate so much. So thirdly, I just want to talk about communication. I have said this to the group, too. I think more communication is always good as opposed to less. We've heard that voiced here tonight. And I don't want to get into the reasons for all and why, how the communication seems to be going, but I think generally having more communication, both from your own perspectives and also from, you know, the city in terms of what's going on is always helpful. And then lastly, I'll just close by saying, you know, there's a lot of dysfunction that we're seeing. And it's been going on, and we've seen it go on for years. And I know the county's not easy to deal with. But but it doesn't make it any easier when there's not clear discussion, not clear communication, or not clear negotiation within the council to try and resolve these issues. I just encourage you to find it in your hearts, to try and find ways to not try and call each other out, put each other down, just work together, try and make things work in your best interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Okay, all right. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Paul Kazaroff, and I live on 111 Madison Place. I was here on Tuesday, and I think it was worthy to call that meeting because we were all wondering what was going on. I also wanted to thank Mr. Rosenberg and the council for the city for giving us a very coherent presentation. And my question is, did that hurt? Was that painful? Why couldn't we hear it on Tuesday? We were all prepared. People came. We were informed to come. Did this cause you any pain? Well, it caused us pain. Those of us who came expecting some information and found that we were disrespected. What's wrong with providing citizens of Stanton with some information? I'm sorry, I have to express my deep disappointment. Why did you create this rancor? It's not useful. And we have been hearing this. I want you to hear my voice. You are disappointing us, many of us. It's not just me talking. It's a lot of other people who are unable to step up here, who are afraid to. I'm sorry to let you know that you do not fail to disappoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Okay. Great. Welcome.
Hello. Happy New Year for all of you. I hope this year is a better year than what it was last year. I've been here for about, in the past five or six months. I've made a lot of statements. I've given you a lot of data. But I've never gotten a response, a positive constructive response from any of you. So I'm here again, and I will continue to come back until I get a positive constructive response. First and foremost, the county has been trying very hard to get out of Stanton. Let them out. They already spent a million dollars on the courthouse. That's a million dollars that you've saved. If you can't use the property and you don't have a proper use for it, then sell it. But get it. It's given to you for nothing. Okay? You can't expect anything for nothing in this world. So be it. Vote for the county to get out. Secondly, I have now been picketing, or I've picketed it all summer long with respect to assessments. You said at one time when you put out a flyer that the city citizens deserved better. How do you account for over 26% increase in assessments? I don't care that Charlottesville increased their assessments. I don't care that Harrisonburg increased their assessment. Why are you increasing your assessments? I don't understand. At the same time, you decreased the tax rate by three points. It doesn't make much sense. If you were going to decrease the tax rate, you should have decreased it by roughly 20%, 20 points, not three points. Secondly, when was the last time you all took a ride through Newtown and looked at some of the houses and talked to some of the people?
This is a public hearing concerning the courthouse.
Excuse me. I have two minutes left, and I want to-
It's a public hearing concerning the courthouse. You can bring those other items of other matters.
I can't understand a word you're saying. You understand me.
This is a public hearing concerning the courthouse. This is a public hear-
I beg your pardon? This is a public hearing for everything.
For the courthouse, matters from the public, you can speak concerning the other matters.
And you don't want me to speak before these people, right?
All right, you may speak under matters from the public.
And you wouldn't give me sufficient time to speak before, even though there was nobody here.
I'm going to have to ask you to step away. I'm going to have to-
Even though there was no one here.
Mr. Fossa, please step away.
Huh? How do you justify?
Please step away from the podium.
How do you justify the increase?
Mr. Fossa-
My increase in taxes-
Mr. Fossa, this is a public hearing concerning the courthouse. You may speak under matters from the public. Thank you, Mr. Fossa. All right, anyone in the Zoom? Okay, all right. Next.
Good evening, members of council.
Welcome.
Frank Strasser, 16 North Washington Street, and I'm Executive Director of Historic Stanton Foundation. I have scribble marks all over my papers, and I'm going to try to keep it straight. Historic Stanton Foundation sent you a letter last month outlining our position on why we believe that you ought to go ahead and accept the MOU and invite the county to go ahead and move on to the county. The big issue has been that over the years that we have seen the county posturing and trying to make it very difficult for Stanton to make offers, to be able to negotiate in any sane manner at all. In fact, they've changed the rules on you over and over every time you try to negotiate. It's very plain. Historic Stanton emphasizes that the buildings on the five parcels, they must be preserved, and they need to undergo rehabilitation for continued use. And these are very challenging governmental circumstances that you are faced with. But the city of Stanton needs to take control. However possible, it's now time, after 20, 30 years of these negotiations, take control however you can. Historic Stanton supports the concepts leading to a future use of the related properties for court, legal, and office buildings. It's what they're built for. That's what they need to be used for. They're not adaptable to many other situations. And I believe Stanton has the need for those buildings as outlined by the city manager. Historic Stanton's mission strongly advocates for the historic court buildings. And our clear stance is that the preservation of the historic architecture that is integral to the downtown historic setting must be preserved. And that, identified in previous studies, please go back and look at the studies that Fraser Associates already did. The information's right there. You'll get the condition of the building. You get reviews by professional engineers. You get reviews by nationally renowned court safety experts. It's already done. The footwork's already done. And the county has changed the game every time to try to say that it won't work when it will. It's already been proved that that 1901 courthouse can be retrofitted for courts. Your use of them for your circuit court would be actually much easier than the heavy burden that they placed in their demands of items that needed to go in that courthouse. It really could be used by Stanton. HSF has always supported retaining the county downtown. It's part of the Code of Virginia. It's part of our very important history since the 18th century. It is part of the community function, the county function. It would be great to have a wonderful partnership and to make this work. But you have somebody that is not a partner. The analogy that I had been using over and over in meetings was that you have a marriage that has failed, and it's time to tell the kids that we've got to make this work and protect the kids. And the kids are the citizens, is that the marriage has failed. It really has. Minute left. This issue is soaked in inaccurate information and endless posturing, specifically by the county. It really is. I've listened to the county board supervisors' meetings, and I've seen the presentations. We have to reverse the hyperbole about these buildings. These buildings really are in much better shape than a lot of people keep saying that they are. The 1901 courthouse is, again, clearly studied. It can be rehabbed. 6 East Johnson Street is the district court building. It is a sick building, and it's a sick building because it hasn't been taken care of. And there have been so many additions made to the interior that you can't stand to be inside it. I have had the unpleasant experience of being in the building. And you realize very quickly, there have been partitions thrown in it, windows covered up, pipes run through it. It's a mess. It needs to be taken apart, and it needs to be rehabbed. There's much that can be done with that building. And in fact, it was built in a manner that makes it floodproofed. It really can be adapted. The jail building would make a great archive for county records or whoever's records. It's a modern building that could be rehabbed for a good archive. The historic courthouse does not work well for an archive. It's just too porous to be able to keep historic documents in. I know this. I've dealt with it. You need to get them in a modern building. There's a lot to say. Thank you.
Anyone? All right. Would anyone else concerning the courthouse? Lou?
Frank Mixon. My name is Bob Nutt. I live at 506 East Beverly Street. I have three points I'd like to make. I'd kind of like to keep the county in Stanton. And I, number one, I think very much that the present court jail facility is the very best place to rebuild the courts. One expense that Augusta County was looking at, they would have to spend $4 million rehabbing Beverly Manor School to work courts while this was being done. I don't think that's necessary. I think that we could tear down the jail first, build something with a pair of elevators, a secure loading/unloading facility, build a walkway across to the Echols Building, which we could restore along with the Law Building. You have a huge amount of space to at least temporarily support the courts while you tear down the rest of the thing. That location, the main court facility part of it, not the jail, is three stories high. You could easily go six stories high on top of a sub-level parking lot and a level parking lot for a total of seven stories up. That's the way to build courts that would facilitate, would accommodate both county and city for a lot less money. One of the problems we're dealing with, and certainly Mr. Garber made it clear when he said, "I want nothing to do with Stanton", it sort of began when they talked with you guys and came up with this god-awful plan to wipe out lawyers' way, everything from the Echols Building on up to a big building on South New Street. What really upset them most, of course, that was turned down. They appealed, and you knew the answer in three seconds. It took three minutes. No, it took three days. No, three weeks. It took three months to get back and say, "No, you know, we're not going to honor that appeal. It's just not possible." Anyway, they got the impression that you were hard to work with. And as though to prove them correct, you performed beautifully on Tuesday. You're not people to deal with. You're, and then finally, if we're going to keep the county in town, as I think we should, we need to come up with a reasonable offer. And we need to look very carefully at what it's going to cost to fix our courts. Realize, as I think you do, you need a pair of elevators that are separated. You need separate facilities for the bad guys and the good guys, the lawyers and what have you. You need parking, secure parking. How are you going to get that on the Cochran Building? Oh, you could get it by tearing down something next to the Cochran Building. But that's not the way we want to do things around here. Anyway, I think if you look carefully, you will find that it's going to cost Stanton 50 or 60 million dollars to completely update their courts. And I think it's just, it's really terrible that we have three court systems within Augusta County. And we should really look into Wayne's Borough, because if you've got three people contributing to one court system, I think it would be a lot cheaper. The only way you're going to keep Augusta County in town is to show them something that is cheaper to build, cheaper to operate, and gives the county a shining center city, which I think could be worth more than most of the rest of it. Anyway, those are my arguments. There's a lot more, but if we lose the legal community, there will be a small exodus. There is so much underutilized property in Stanton, as well as a considerable amount of vacant. And getting, pushing the lawyers out is not going to help. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to speak concerning the courthouse? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council. My name is Leslie Kip. I live at 16 Church Street. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I was going to listen. So what I say next may not be too coherent, because I haven't really thought a lot of it out. But my first impression, I have to say, as far as with the exception of the courthouse building, the other buildings, my gut reaction is, is that we're being sold the Brooklyn Bridge for a dollar. I think that there's a lot of unknowns that may be involved with those. And so I would tread very lightly in considering those additional buildings. I will say that the comments that Frank just made don't make me see, don't make me think that it was his, there is a losing proposition, as I did 10 minutes- don't make me see, don't make me think that it was his, there is a losing proposition as I did ten minutes ago. But I still think you have to tread lightly with those buildings. More importantly, I, there seems to be a sense of resignation here, like this is already a done deal, that Augusta County is moving out. One thing we talk about, they made a decision, well, it seems to me the referendum that they did a few years ago was a decision by the citizens of the county. And my hope is, is that we could proceed with a proactive effort over the next few months to try and keep the county here. Now, admittedly, this may mean that you got to get down in the trenches and do guerrilla warfare in the state legislature. I'm not that familiar with it, but it doesn't seem to me that it's a done deal. And it seems to me that there's a lot of little details in the legislation that has been proposed that could be stumbling blocks. But if we're going to be proactive, then we also have to try to think out of the box. Now, that said, I have a lot of thoughts on that, but I can't, I'm not going to present them now because we'd be here till the rooster crows. So with that note, I'll sum it up. One, I suspect that we may be buying the Brooklyn Bridge. Two, I'd like to see some proactive effort to keep the county here. And three, we've got to try and think out of the box. There have been some, I think, some useful suggestions made here tonight, and maybe we need to follow up on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nope. All right. Anyone else? All right. With that, the public hearing concerning the Augusta County courthouse is now closed. I will say that when new information comes in, we will present it to the community and we will continue to have public hearings concerning the Augusta County courthouse. All right. The next item is matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg, do you have any information?
I do have three items, Madam Mayor. First, well, we spoke earlier about the storm preparation. Mayor, you raised that issue. And as I mentioned previously, staff will be meeting tomorrow morning to make plans in anticipation of Sunday's weather event. I also want to remind council and the public that beginning today, in response to the increasing number of COVID cases and also staffing constraints being experienced by the library, that the library has temporarily reverted to curbside only services. And the current plans are for the library to restore services at the beginning of February, provided the current surge of Bates as is currently predicted. Finally, I want to share some fantastic news with council and the public. Late this afternoon, we were, well, we had been informed previously, but received final word from the Commonwealth of Virginia that the city of Stanton has been awarded eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in the form of a Virginia Business Ready Sites Grant from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership to undertake the essential due diligence studies and preliminary final site engineering and design to help advance Stanton Crossing to the goal of a tier four site. There were there was seven million dollars of funding available in this grant round. There were eighteen applications totaling an estimated forty-four million dollars. Only eleven of the applications were funding, funded, ours was one of them. And when we combine this grant with four hundred and thirty-two thousand in funds received in the form of a brownfields grant for the current demolition activities of Stanton Crossing, we now have received from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership over one and a quarter million dollars to help move the site closer to a tier four status. And then when we combine that with nine million dollars in funding provided by the Virginia Department of Transportation for this project for transportation infrastructure, the city has received over ten million dollars worth of financial support from the Commonwealth of Virginia for Stanton Crossing, which I think is a demonstration, as Mr. Vaughn has said before to you, a demonstration of the Commonwealth's commitment to this site and its recognition of the potential for this site to attract quality development and investment. So I want to extend my thanks to Billy Vaughn and Amanda Demeo, as well as the other partners they've worked with and the city council for its continued support of this effort. Related to that, I know some of you have expressed interest in the status of the marketing plan for Stanton Crossing. I think I've shared with you previously that an RFP was issued. Five proposals were received in response to the RFP. They were evaluated. There were two entities interviewed. And at the end of December, there was a contract awarded to a team comprising Hunter Andrews, Kurth, and Timmons Group to develop the marketing plan. There will be a kickoff meeting on January twenty-fourth, a work session in mid-February, and the schedule provides for a presentation of the marketing plan strategy in late March. And there are various stakeholders who will participate in the process, including BEDP, the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport, Buckingham Branch Railroad, Stanton Crossing Partners LLC, and the Economic Development Authority. So I'm pleased to be able to provide that update to you with the good news about Stanton Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is matters from the public. This is part of city council's agenda, which is titled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I'll let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I've informed you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop, please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the clerk of council to end your call. And if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section eighteen point two dash four one five A two. Number two, this is a time for us as councils simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not exchange and give and take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Number three, we ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to an individual employee of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail, or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous, using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the city of Stanton. And doing anything that has disrupted to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our acting clerk of council, Ms. Cormier. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participants using the Zoom platform. All right. So this means you can speak about any city business. We'll start off with folks in the audience and then we'll go to the Zoom and we'll go back and forth. Again, five minutes, state your name and your address. So with that, Matters from the Public is now open. Welcome back.
Thank you. Matt Fitzgerald, two sixty-one Thornrose. It's kind of nice to get another second crack at the apple. First, I just want, for the person who was asked to leave during the public hearing, I wish you wouldn't have left because I would have liked to have heard what we had to say. So if you're online, call in so we can hear. At least I want to hear. You know, there's a time and place and would have liked to hear what he had to say. Secondly, I agree with the director of Historic Stanton. He made a couple of points that were pretty compelling. One is just the advice to just take control, you know, to not let the county dictate everything to you guys. And I don't have to say that, but sometimes it's good to hear. You know, you guys have, at least I feel like there's, you have significant bargaining power that you may or may not realize, but it's there and it should be used to your full advantage. And I'm glad to know that the Fraser info is readily available as you guys conduct your due diligence because that would be really good information to use to analyze and make some good decisions. And hopefully that in conjunction with additional due diligence, you guys can make some good decisions. I mean, really, as much as I want to see the courthouse stay here or see the court stay here, you know, if it turns out that we end up acquiring the building or the city ends up acquiring the buildings, I could be okay with it. I think all I'm asking for is to buy time and I think that's all. I hear some of you guys saying as well, just to buy some time to see if it's a good plan, you know? So I appreciate you guys at least expressing an interest in taking that time and just encourage you to use that time wisely. You know, you know, whether it means buying all five buildings or, you know, some of the buildings, not all the buildings, I mean, or even, you know, if, what if there's, of course, I said, don't negotiate in public, but my gosh, you know, who's to say that you couldn't option the same properties that they tried to option? Or option, you know, the properties for yourself for some time while you do, you know, while you do your diligence? If they're, if they want a decision now, you know? So anyway, appreciate your time. Good luck.
Thank you. Great. Anyone else that would like to speak under Matters from the Public? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one. Okay. All right. Go ahead. Hello? Caller, would you like to speak? Caller, you're now live. Would you like to speak under Matters from the Public? All right. Maybe we can try again. All right. Let's start the clock back over. And did we have somebody that wanted to come to the podium? Welcome.
My name is Linda Farah, and I wanted to come here this evening to speak about Shenandoah Valley Animal Services Center. I understand that there are a lot of important matters that are going on right now between the county and the city, things that we, you know, want to hear about and that are very important to all the citizens. But Shenandoah Valley Animal Services Center is important to me. They are in limbo while we wait for decisions to be made by the council in Waynesboro and Stanton and the Augusta County Board of Supervisors. They have lost their supervising vet, and so basic medical needs of the animals are not being met today, yesterday, while we wait in limbo for the animals to get what they need and deserve. I think that councils and the board of supervisors are not being intentionally cruel, but that is what is happening. It's unfair to the animals and it's unfair to the staff that work there every day. It's unfair to the volunteers who step up and take care of basic maintenance matters because they aren't being taken care of the localities, by the localities. Again, I understand you have waiting measures, matters to consider that are important and deserve your attention. But this does too. Please don't forget, because we have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are they still there? Okay. Would anyone else like to come to the podium? Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members, since we're way past my bedtime, I really hesitate to prolong this. Y'all having fun yet? You're earning your money tonight, I will say that. I'm a little bit like my friend Les. I didn't expect to speak, but I was struck, I was in Adley High with Francis Collins. And I was older, still am, but he was a good friend of my late sister's. And as she said, everybody knew Francis was a genius. Just few of us knew what a great sense of humor he has. He's just, he's just a terrific person. And I hope everybody learns something about him tonight. And I think what the serendipitous benefit, I didn't realize the resolution was going to be presented or anything. But obviously, we are proud of him. And obviously, he is proud of Stanton. And my thought was, let's not cause him to change his mind. Let's conduct ourselves, both you all, and as I said, my hat's always off to you. Every time I come to this podium, I want to remind myself that my hat's off to you. I may not agree with you on everything. And I don't. But let's all conduct ourselves so that Francis Collins is still proud of being a Stantonian. One other quick thought. Speaking of being long in the tooth, and as everybody, I think, now acknowledges, y'all got a tough road to hoe on this thing. The courthouse, we all know that. And forty years ago, in the mid-eighties, I was in Richmond on the annexation issue. So that's a couple a lot longer than Afghanistan war was going on. So we're still at it. But as Churchill said, what is success? It's going from failure to failure without losing your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on back, Frank.
For a long, your evening. Frank Strasser, sixteen North Washington Street. I know that Brenda was trying to goad me earlier. The nineteen fifty's building is not my favorite building, architecturally, in a whole different ways. But I do want to emphasize, and this comes from my personally doing an extraordinary amount of reading and research about existing buildings, is there's so much embodied energy there in that building? And that means the energy that has already been placed in burning all those bricks and creating all that concrete, which is really horrible for the environment, creating all of that concrete. If you tear it down, if you tear down buildings, you continue demolition, the impact to the environment is horrendous. It's, the American Institute of Architects, a number of organizations that have come out and said, we've got to stop tearing down buildings. You must reuse them. So that's my push there is reuse what you have. Don't tear it down. The single thing that is driving this whole argument that constantly is creating, it's the fly in the ointment, is the insistence that the courts have to be in a single building. They do not. You will hear over and over in the rhetoric that they must be in a single building. The Virginia Court Guidelines do not state that. You may use a campus of buildings. You can do that. You may use digital communication to enhance court facilities and to lessen the number of people that need to be in a building. So there are other solutions out there, but the idea that we are stuck and we have to have one big behemoth building in downtown is ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. Can think towards restoring or building new the Augusta streetscape and putting buildings. and, and putting buildings where those parking lots are. You can have, you, you know, the majority of the footprint that the county is asking for can be taken care of in a four-story building that just covers the parking lots. You don't have to touch the bank building, you don't have to touch either bank building. You can do it right there on those two parking lots. There's enough square footage there. It's almost seventy-five thousand square feet with parking underneath. If you do a four-story building right there that blends those downtown, it's a pretty, pretty simple solution. Thanks.
Right. Thank you, Frank. Great. We do have one. Okay. All right, welcome caller. No, oh, they hung up. Okay. Right. Hi, welcome.
I'm Renee Clark. I'm here representing Cat's Cradle. Spoke to y'all before about Shenandoah Valley Animal Services Center. I'm vice president on their board of directors. Here tonight to just kind of express, I know it's taken you guys some time and y'all need information to make your decisions and totally understand that, but we have some more urgent needs, I think I've emailed you guys about. They currently no longer have their supervising vet, which sounds like it might not be a big deal to some people, but it's a huge deal to the animal health, which I've spoken with lots of people individually on councils and boards, and I know that that seems to be something that's important to all of you guys. So I think a lot of it is just I'm trying to come before you and help educate to know what the implications might be, because as we've reached out before, we're here to help, not to be a problem. We want to help solve the problem. With that said, not having a supervising vet means that any type of communicable diseases that the animals come in with, you can't have medication there on site to treat them with. So you would have to drive a cat with an eye infection or a dog with some kennel cough to an individual vet appointment. As you know, they already have a significant staff shortage that still is, has not been resolved or the vacancies, there are still vacancies out there that there's no way to deal with them. So I can't imagine how, one, they would have enough time to drive each individual animal to a vet, and two, our vet clinics right now are really overwhelmed, not having a lot of appointments or how they would get those appointments for these animals. So just to make sure you know, there's no, there's no ad open for the vet. There's no existing RFP that's currently open. There was one from a few years ago, because I think the vet has tried to resign before. So it's something where it looks like it's just not getting addressed. And I think I'm just reaching out to you guys and reaching out to anybody who hears this. They need some help. They, they need, we need a vet. They don't need a lot. They just need a part-time vet to come in maybe once a week. And they also need, they have some basic maintenance needs, I think I've let some of you guys know about. Again, we're not trying to make a problem, we're trying to help solve it. We're trying to find individual volunteers who may donate their time to come fix some things or someone donated a dishwasher, which I think is fabulous. Again, that's all to help. But while we're figuring out what to do, we need some leadership. And I feel like I'm coming to you guys, so my council. And so I think that you might be the leaderships who can do that. But with that said, I also want to make sure in my conversations recently, I also want to let you guys know again, we're here to help with education because I know understanding what, how progressive your shelter is, sometimes it's hard to know if you haven't seen how other communities have done it. And pet retention, I've talked about before. Sometimes that scares people because they think people are being turned away when they try to bring animals. Actually, you're just trying to solve the problem to get them to keep the animal. Also with, you know, you hear the word no kill, you know, and that really alarms people. Well, truthfully, it means over ninety percent, which you're already at ninety-seven percent. So we just want to encourage y'all to keep that ninety-seven percent, don't go backwards. So the staff is asking for your help. Many of us here tonight who may not want to speak, I'm here to just let you know, we're still here, we're still watching, we're still hoping that you're gonna help the animals and help the staff at Shenandoah Valley Animal Services Center, no matter what you do, but long-term, they need help, but short-term, they need help right now. And I do think that the majority of shelters that I know of have supervising vets. I find that odd that people would think they don't. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and we look forward to hearing more information from you guys on which way you decide to go. But if there's anything you can do to help them find a vet, please help them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, come on up.
So mine's kind of a mess. I'm Ashley. I live at seventeen fifty-six Inglewood Drive. I spoke to you guys last time about the same thing that everybody is speaking to you about, or the last couple of people have spoken to you about. I'm concerned about our animals. I'm concerned about the animals that are at the shelter right now that cannot receive treatment, as they said, because it's impossible for them to do that without a supervising vet. They don't have the staff. They've got plenty of volunteers, but many of these volunteers don't have the time to give, you know, a ride to the vet every time a dog has a cough or every time a cat has igoop or these are all the things that happen in a shelter. These are the things that the animals come in with. They can't give vaccinations to get them adopted, which are basic guidelines for getting animals adopted in the state of Virginia. They have to have the basic vaccines. They have to be spayed and neutered. So these are things that they cannot do right now. So they cannot provide the basic care that is needed to be given to these animals, and they're overflowing. Right now, they have an evacuation plan because they are so afraid of what's going to happen. That's terrifying. It's terrifying for the staff who are waiting till the end of the month to find out if they have a job or not. A staff that has given their life. I've, I've done this job. It's awful. It's exhausting. It's emotionally fatiguing. The suicide rate for shelter workers is five point three in one million workers, the highest suicide rate among the American workers shared only by police officers and firefighters. The horrifying things that these people see every day. These people have pushed through multiple directors, and the director problem is not because of an overturn of directors, as the Waynesboro city manager said in his little article. It is because they are underpaid. Every single employee at that shelter is way underpaid for what they do. And they keep pushing through every day, and they're pushing through right now, not knowing if they have a job at the end of the month. One of them's giving birth within the next couple of weeks. She's dog kennel manager. She doesn't know if she has a job. So these are people that are terrified. These are people that have given their everything for these animals. They've pushed through time and time again, and they deserve so much recognition. This would be something for Stan to hang his hat on, to have a shelter like that, to have such a high save rate, to have such an incredible staff that cares so much about the unwanted animals of this community. These animals are not wanted by the other shelter that has the contractor, RFP in. I know the other shelter. The other shelter believes that hounds and pit bulls are unadoptable. So those will be the first to go. Feral cats are a danger to society or animal cruelty, so they will also be killed. Whereas these people are finding them homes in barns and making sure that these animals have lives. That's all I care about. I care about their lives. I care about the lives of these people who have given up their lives to save these lives. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one caller. Do we have them hooked up?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead caller.
My name's Allison. I live at Farrier Court. And because it's been like five hours since it happened, I just wanted to remind the public that you guys are all about to enter into a closed-door meeting, that half of you don't even know what it's about, when the other half couldn't even be bothered to show up to a public meeting that everybody knew what that meeting was about and shouldn't have been like something scary for you to show up to. So I just hope that going forward, you can at least recognize how hypocritical it is to not share information with fellow council, council members and then not even bother to show up to public meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, with that, that concludes Matters From the Public. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session. However, before we actually go into the closed session, Mr. Blair, is it okay if we have a five-minute break? Do we have the motion and then have a five-minute break?
Certainly, you could have the motion and vote on it, and if the motion is successful, then you could call for a five-minute recess.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to enter a closed meeting for discussion pertaining to the performance of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one and two consultant, consult. I'll get it here in a second. Compensation, compensation with legal counsel for necessary legal-related advice and discussions regarding employment law matters pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A dash eight.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
Councillor Darby has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing then, Ms. Cormier. Please.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead. Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Clathy.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right.
I am both.
All needs to be.
Yeah, can't counsel go.
Ms. Stoll.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We are now in closed session. However, we are going to take a five-minute recess. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Mayor Oaks.
Councillor Darby.
After the, I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Robertson is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Cormier. Cormier, I love saying that. Ms. Cormier, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Clathy.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're back in open session. As mayor of the city of Stanton, this regular meeting is now adjourned.